Okay, welcome everybody. It's six oh three and we're gonna call this meeting of the committee of the whole to order. Madam Clerk, would you do the roll call, please?
Councilmember and Mayor Pro Tem Mathie. Councilmember Bowlin.
Here.
Councilmember Montney.
Here.
Councilmember Emig.
Here.
Councilmember Becker.
Here.
Councilmember Urban.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Crable.
Here.
Councilmember Crampler.
Here.
Thank you very much. Okay, next on our agenda is public comment. I think we have one person?
That is correct.
Okay, so if you want to make your way to the podium and I'll read the statement here. Public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It's an opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of view to maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of all views. What was that? Oh, sorry. Lost my focus where I was. Speakers must identify themselves for the record but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time ceased. Stage is yours.
Thank you. My name is Serena Fish. I am head of Westside Neighbors. I'm also a member of the PSCRB board. I'm here to make public comment on the three initiatives. The first one about saving money. This has been a product, a project of our city manager ever since he took over. And I don't understand why we need another commission and a, another way to, to save money or combine services because that's something that he has been actively doing with all department heads since he's been here. Second initiative. For green infrastructure. All department heads need to incorporate it in their planning. And a part of their daily and whatever they're going to do or build or dig or whatever. We already have a beautification committee and I see no reason to again spend more money and time with a board when you have people in charge of departments who do know what can and can't be done and how green can be incorporated into it. Perfect example is Kevin as Public Works head is incorporating green into like the basements he's building and stuff. So that's constantly on his mind and he's putting it in where he can. The last one is violence, gun violence. Criminals aren't interested. So you're wasting your time. A group already exists if you want to do some kind of a, more of a investigation or whatever and that's the PSCRB board. And last is, I would suggest repealing a lot of the laws that were put into effect on local and whatever law enforcement because that's one of the reasons why you're having a lot of increase in gun violence. Not only here but all over. Luckily, it's not so bad yet here, but it's getting that way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I think you said the one email that came in earlier was actually for a different meeting, correct?
That is correct. I did have one come in late and there was no name tied to it nor could I take a name from the email. So it has not been shared, but I emailed the individual back. So just want to put that on record that we did try.
Okay, so you share that with us later if we get information on it?
Correct.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, we have just one item on the consent agenda, which is just approving the minutes from the January tenth meeting. Can I get a, does anybody have a motion to make on this?
Almost make a motion to approve the agenda. I mean the-
A second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Are we doing voice vote on this one?
Yeah, there'll all be voice.
Okay, thank you.
You say that and we're at a count meeting, so this will be the only one. Councilmember Mathie.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Montney.
Yes.
Councilmember Emig.
Yes.
Councilmember Becker.
Yes.
Councilmember Urban.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Hi.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Crampler.
Yes.
Okay, consent agenda approved. Moving on to our regular agenda. Up first on the regular agenda is presentation of the FY twenty twenty-three budget capital projects as requested by the finance department. One small change made to this, I think the agenda said that we were going to have a presentation by each director and then time for questions. In order to streamline this, all the directors are going to present one after another and then we'll do questions at the end. So first I'll turn this over to the city manager.
Thank you very much. That is exactly how we requested that the questions be held to the end. This is a two-part. First, this week, we're gonna have part one on the FY twenty-three update. It's gonna include the directors that we have seated before us to talk about some of the larger projects. Council have been prepped in three-on-ones. Finance Director Scott Rathman will then follow up on February twenty-eighth next week at the council meeting for part two. And then we move on to different phases of the ultimate council approval targeted for April eleventh prior to a May one start for FY twenty-three. Scott, I'll turn it to you.
Thank you, City Manager Gleason and Mayor Council. Teed up nicely. Appreciate that. You know, one of the, one of the material challenges that we have with the budget is trying to communicate and make sense of these very large numbers. You know, the community is concerned with, will I be paying more for what I'm getting? Will I be getting less? How are my dollars being put to work? You know, how is the budget going to impact me? So, next slide, bring up the presentation, please. Here we go. Let's go to the- Just so you know, we're not seeing the slides or you guys in the room except for Jamie.
They're working on that right. Councilmember Becker, they're working on it right now. I just saw the slide pop up. Do you see it? Okay.
Okay, we can see the slides now. Okay, cool. Okay, so tonight's goal really is to provide some, some tangible visibility on the budget dollars at work. The capital improvement projects, we have nearly fifty-seven million dollars being proposed for the FY twenty twenty-three fiscal year. That's nearly twenty-one percent of the total citywide budget. So there's, there's some material impacts on the community related to these projects and we're fortunate enough to have the, the three main directors that will be in charge of these projects going to present the details tonight. We have Russ Waller, the Director of Facilities, Eric Field, the Director of Parks and Rec, and Kevin Cothee, the Director of Public Works. So I'm gonna flip it right over to these guys so that we can get going and learn a little bit more about these, the budget dollars and being put work and impacting the community directly. So, next slide, please, and Russ.
Well, thank you, Scott. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Council. I'm here to present to you the proposed projects we have for the Facilities Department this coming fiscal year twenty-three. Start with the biggest one, that is the Arena RTU and Ice Center Dehumidification Improvements Project. It's a very substantial project. The biggest project, highest value project in our proposed plan. Excuse me, the, the base of the project is to replace the large rooftop units that are on the arena. And those are the ones that serve the bowl, the primary arena event area. The size of those are about, they're about the size of a semi truck is what each one of those, and there's two of them. So those existing units are in very poor condition. They have not weathered well. Unfortunately, for the short period of time, it's, it's longer than most people realize, but it has been short period of time based on what those should last. But they did not weather well and we do need to work on the replacement. In addition to looking at just a direct replacement, we've hired a consultant to help us do evaluation of those units and to look for ways we could do improvements of the entire system and look for ways where we could basically reduce some energy use that that facility does. Because that is one, one of the biggest primary users of energy is the RTUs. So that, that preliminary evaluation is ongoing right now. We've got some initial feedback, but some options that they are looking at would be to replace the units and then add dehumidification to the entire facilities, entire building. Right now, if we have to dehumidify the air, if it's a moist evening and we're at an event going on, the only way we can dehumidify that air is to run the heaters. We basically dry the air out with the heaters, so we're burning gas to dry the air and then we turn around and cool it back down depending on the conditions we need to then put it into the facility to keep the occupants at a good condition. That's very, very inefficient use and it's very expensive to do that. If you separate those systems and provide a standalone dehumidification, much more efficient, uses a whole lot less energy. It's just the upfront substantial or upfront cost to provide that infrastructure that does not exist can be substantial. So when we do come back to council with options after this evaluation is done, we're gonna provide options and estimated costs for those options. Basically, the, just to give you the highlights, one of the options would be just a direct replacement of the RTUs. No energy savings, we just replace what we got. We provide a cost for that. Another one would be to replace the units, add this dehumidification, provide some rate of return on what that additional cost, the savings would be over a period of time, and then obviously the cost to do that. We could also replace the units and with a interior dehumidification. Not quite as efficient as a separate dehumidification, but it still does provide some energy reduction. And then the option that we don't want to pursue, but it is an option, is to just continue maintaining what we got. We can spend money on them. It's not advisable. There currently are twenty-two systems which can no longer, they don't longer produce our twenty-two. You can still buy it, but it's very expensive. So my recommendation, I would be to not choose that option. So in addition to that, we have also coupled this project with the Bloomington Ice Center. That part of the facility does have dehumidification, except that system is, is old enough at this point that it's showing signs of wear than replacement repairs that have been done. So we do need to replace that unit with a new unit and a better dehumidification system. We're also gonna add some redundancy when we do that. So there's only one unit at this time. If it does go down, we have no facility or no way to operate the facility. So we would add another unit with dehumidification to provide that redundancy. I did spend a lot of time on that. One last thing, I guess I was asked about duck cleaning as far as this project. That's typically not done when you get into larger scale facilities like this. The size of these ducks are three and four foot diameter. Really, the only way to clean them would be to physically go in there and clean them. There are some mechanical methods of doing it, but it just typically is not done, given the size. We could add that as a potential option included in the bid, just to see what kind of pricing we get and if it's reasonable, we could pursue possibly some duck cleaning at the same time. But like I said, that's a not, not a typical. So I did spend a lot of time on that. I'll move a little quicker with the next one, so. Fire Department is not here to present this, but I've asked to say that we are assisting Fire Department, both facilities and Public Works are working with them to do some parking lot repairs at their headquarters station. Moving on, the unforeseen major facilities repair, this is a standard line item that we have every year. It's just put in there in case emergencies arise. If unforeseen issue arises that we did not budget for, that gives us some money to take care of these emergency repairs. So the Police Administration HVAC Controls Upgrade, this is also another project we've been working on for quite some time. The, once again, we're looking with a system that's relatively old. It's the original system in the facility. It's showing age. We're having trouble finding components to repair it. It also is a proprietary system, the actual control system. So anytime we go to do any maintenance or repair on it, we have to hire essentially a firm that has the special software, special ability to get into the, the automation system. It's at the point that we would probably just scrap the system and replace it with a new one that's an open protocol system that allows any vendor to come in and work on it, assuming they have that expertise, but it does not require proprietary software in there like that. So part of this would be an evaluation of the actual system, but the other part would be to actually replace components, replace units in order to bring the system basically back into a completely automated operable system. It's functioning at this point, but a lot of the stuff we have to do is now manual adjustment. The Jackson Street remodel, this is phase two. So we just completed phase one, which is a remodel of the office space. Actually, facilities administrative staff will be moving there tomorrow. So that's the front office area that's complete. The next stage of that would be to remodel the shop and our storage area. Currently, the facility maintenance crew works out of the lower level of the Lincoln Garage. A very confined space, not conducive to doing much of any kind of maintenance there. It's very difficult to operate out of. The phase two would be a remodel of the back portion of that facility to provide storage for materials. So we don't have to run to the store to buy anything. In the middle of the night, we get a call, we have that product available to us on the shelf. We could take it, go out and do repairs at a facility and not have to, you know, pay a service charge or special service charges to open up a building or open up a facility to prior parts. So it's a must-needed improvement to be able to let us to use that entire facility for our, our department. City Hall ADA Life Safety Improvements. This is also a relatively substantial project, but as we were looking at, evaluating existing facilities and the space needs for the entire city, we did stumble upon some issues at City Hall. There are some concerns with ADA. Primary one being the elevator. There are some external sidewalk issues that need to be addressed. It's one of those things that, you know, you go in there day to day, but you don't necessarily realize it until you actually start looking at it and which we did as part of that evaluation. The money we have budgeted should take care of those issues. We do have some more investigation to be done to make sure that we are addressing it appropriately and we're gonna prioritize those repairs to make sure we get the most critical ones done first. We're hoping that that'll cover everything, but we're kind of hedging our bets that if we don't get to it, we would have to come into a staged approach, do a few of them one year and then budget again for a following year to finish those out. Along the same lines is the next one, the City Hall Genset Replacement. We did, that's another life safety one, but we budgeted separately specifically because that one really we can't prioritize out. It is a major priority. The existing system, the existing generators is basically nearing the end of its light, useful life. Our fleet department maintains it and they pretty much told us that you need to replace it this year. So that, the reason it is a critical replacement and it needs to move forward is that generator provides emergency backup power for City Hall, which includes the IT servers and the police department's computer-aided dispatch system. So that does need to be replaced to keep those items functional. Market Street Garage Structural Repairs. I know you've seen this repairs to the garage many times and you're sick of spending money on that. We understand that. Unfortunately, we spent money out last year. We did not get all the structural repairs done. There are still some remaining items done that need to be done. We've temporarily shored those additional issues. They're fine at this point. The garage is still safe. However, with the amount of time it's gonna take us to complete the evaluation of downtown parking, to look at a new facility to replace that garage, it's gonna take a few years. And so we're asking to go back, finish out the structural repairs that we did not get completed to make sure we keep that garage operational and safe during that interim. And then lastly is the, along the same veins is repairs of the Abraham Lincoln Garage. As with any facility like this, over time, it shows age, shows wear and tear and that garage is at that point. The, the last time we spent any money on that facility was two thousand and fifteen, so it's been a few years. We spent about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for structural repairs. We've had an evaluation done by a structural engineer this past fall. They came back to us with essentially two million dollars in repairs. What we put that, split that over several years, three to four years is what they're saying we could get by, taking care of the most important structural issues and some drainage concerns to take care of that for the first year. So we're, we're gonna do in that project over a stage process. With that, I'll turn this over to Eric Field.
Thank you, Russ. Good evening, Council, Mayor Pro Tem and City Manager. Glad to be here tonight to talk about our future capital projects, we hope. We'll start off with the Creativity Center repairs. These are not city funds, but they are through the AC three grant from the Rebuild Illinois Projects Fund through the Illinois Arts Council, through the Friends of the BCPA to the city to work on the ongoing project that we have there at the Creativity Center. First Park Project is the Sweeney Park Playground and Amminities. We have combined this request of three hundred thousand dollars where we should get half of that back if we get the Oz Lad Grant, which is the Open Space Land Acquisition and Development Grant, which we should know here in the next month or two. And that will prove that park, which is actually grass right now, because it is one of the new parks that was donated land by the Sweeney family. McGraw Tennis Court Resurface, that is listed for two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, but I just want to note that fifty thousand of that would be a private donation. McGrath Park has our most user base and the cracks in the tennis courts continue to grow. We have tried to fix them multiple times, but they still continue to grow. Tipton Trails and Constitution Trail. So last year, there was some stream bed erosion and part of the trail had to be fixed. Not related to our department, but we have learned that we should fix, use this money to put a one and a half inch overlay on the areas that were not affected are fixed last year with the stream bed erosion and go, pretty much, we hope to go from Hershey to Airport Road. The Route sixty-six, I'll just make this one pretty simple. This is an intergovernmental agreement between the county, the town of Normal and the city of Bloomington. It's been ongoing for years and these are payments that we are required to contribute to. Russ already talked about our portion of the Arena RTU. The last one is our golf fund and right now we are asking for the Den Irrigation Pump Station and the reason for that is that's the original to nineteen ninety-seven. This is the lifeblood of our course. If we do not water the course, then the course grass will die and we won't have a course, so that'd be a problem. Ancillary Shed and Demo Replace with the Rinse Aid Pad. The Rinse Aid Pad is required by the state of Illinois. We have to, we have an agreement with else, outside right now to use that, but if we get this rebuilt, then we have the use of this for both golf and the Parks Division, which will help us in the future going forward. So I'm a little bit shorter than Russ, but going on to Director of Public Works, Mr. Kevin Cothee.
Thank you, Mr. Field. Good evening, everyone. I've got a number of pages to go through, but we'll kind of group it together. A lot of these projects are ones that you've already are familiar with. And we'll start out with the State Motor Fuel Tax, which includes our Fox Creek Road and Bridge project, which has been ongoing for a number of years. We've got a number of different line items here to tackle different issues and where we're at on that project is we're actively working on right-of-way acquisition. That's probably the, the biggest thing right now. And, you know, some of these numbers are just to finish out the, the land acquisition design, dealing with the railroad. And we hope to move this project forward as soon as we can, which likely would be maybe next spring as far as bidding this for construction. We're, we're hoping to get there. Street lighting charges. This is a line item that we have in the budget every year that provides five hundred thousand dollars for the streetlights. Just, just the energy costs and the, the providing the poles and the lights, everything like that. This is not the entire cost to the city for street lighting, but this is just the portion we fund out of the MFT budget for that. Hamilton Road, another project that's been in the works for years and you're all familiar with that. Once again, we're, we're in the midst of right-of-way acquisition. We're probably just past sixty percent on the right-of-way on that. We've got tentative agreement with the railroad. We're looking to file the ICC petition. We're hoping to make this into a fall of this year letting. Obviously, there's a lot of parts and pieces to this that have to come together. We're actively working to deliver that. These line items together don't represent the entire money for this. There's also federal STU money, we call it, Surface Transportation Urban Money. That's about five point nine million dollars. That will be in addition to this to, to fund the construction of all these parts and pieces with the Hamilton Road project. We have Cottage Avenue Bridge Design. This is, you know, on the west side of Bloomington, goes across Sugar Creek. The bridge deck was identified many years ago as needing some help and, and it was patched back in the day, but it's time for that bridge deck to be replaced. This is the design for that. The next line item for Jersey Avenue Bridge, Jersey Avenue has been in design. It's, it's nearing completion as far as design goes. And this would be the one point eight million to, to replace the bridge deck and do some work on that bridge that is needed, has needed repairs for a long time. Next page, next slide. For our capital projects, we have Grove on Kickapoo Creek Subdivision Payment Oversizing. This would be for Kickapoo Creek Road. The sixth addition to the Grove, this would be a hundred thousand dollars contribution from the city to pay for extra width on Kickapoo Creek Road. Kickapoo Creek Road is designated as an artero road. It is built as a four-lane road. It's bigger than a standard thirty-foot residential street. That would be the city's share for oversizing. That's the budget amount. The actual amount will be whatever it works out to be when, when the, you know, project, the developer obviously, you know, pays for it and then we pay our share. But this is our budget amount for that. We've got in here for Citizens Convenience Center Land Acquisition. As you all know, we're going through the hydraulic study for the East Street Basin Conceptual, you know, to help with the stormwater issues we had earlier this year. As that project moves forward, you know, we could end up needing to have that land where the Citizens Convenience Center is located as part of the basin. If we do that, then we gotta find another place to put the Citizens Convenience Center. This is a, a budget amount just to move that forward, should that prove out with hydraulic modeling and the design for that proposed East Street Basin. Wiley at Maple Hill Road Intersection Improvements. This roughly six hundred thousand dollars is to improve the stuff there at the Wiley and Maple Hill intersection. There is some concrete pavement deterioration, but there's also some lack of pedestrian accommodations. We know in that area, there's, you know, bus stops. There's also a lot of people that be walking between the apartments and the stores and so forth. This would improve that intersection. This six hundred thousand includes a rebuild Illinois grant that the city has received from DCO. Two hundred thousand dollars. It's a reimbursable grant, so we would upfront the money and then we get two hundred thousand of that back through the DCO reimbursement. So the city's out of pocket would be more like four hundred thousand instead of six hundred thousand. And then we have our annual budgets that we use for, you know, our multi-year street and alley resurfacing program. This is very similar to numbers that you've seen in past budgets. This particular item includes everything from the actual resurfacing program to, you know, pavement patching, pavement preservation. All those different items come, are part of that five point six five million dollars. And then the multi-year sidewalk repair program, very similar numbers to past years, you know, one point one five million dollars. And then the multi-year street alley and sidewalk repairs, that two hundred thousand dollars is just used to do different repairs throughout town as they come up in, in a utility maintenance contract that we have. So, next slide, please. We're moving into the enterprise funds now and this is the Water Enterprise Fund. And I'm gonna kind of go through this kind of rapidly because you'll see that in the Water Fund, the Sewer Fund and the Stormwater Fund, a lot of these projects are in each one because there's different components to it. So Fox Creek Road Bridge Improvements, you already heard me talk about that. This is just the water main component to that project. Locust Colton, we're very familiar with that. This is a phase four and five land acquisition and then construction dollars. We've also, you know, phase eight, Locust Colton. The phase four and five is the part that we accelerated, if you remember. And then phase eight is also accelerated earlier than originally planned because four and five are moving up. But we want to get, get moving with the design on phase eight this next year. There's components for all these, like I said, in the other two enterprise funds as well. Here we have again Grove on Kickapoo Creek's subdivision oversizing. This would be for the water main along Kickapoo Creek Road, a thirty-five thousand dollar budget item. Multi-year GIS Consultant Services. This is some consultant services we use to help us. We've got staff that works with our GIS, but this is a multi-year service that we're using, a consultant to help us do more accelerated upgrades with our GIS and that has been very productive. Consultant to help us do more accelerated upgrades with our GIS and that has been very productive in the, in the last two years. Multi-year Consultant Leak Detection for Water Loss. We've used line items like this before. This helps us determine where in the city we might have water mains that are leaking. You know, we have a certain amount of water loss as what is produced. The plant is not all delivered to a home and metered. So this is to help find those, maybe they're small leaks, maybe they don't come to the surface, but to find those and, and, you know, prevent a major leak later on, a major break. Van Scoyke, we've got in here money for construction and for construction engineering inspection. This is a project that we're working on getting consultant hired right now to design. They'll be coming back to you soon to get that design contract going, but this will be construction and construction inspection. The Water Treatment Plant Lime Grit Removal System Design. This would help us with our clara cones. We have a grit that builds up in there and this, this removal system would help us. So we don't have to take the clara cones offline and do a lot of manual cleaning that we do today. We have for the Water Treatment Plant, again, chlorine gas scrubber system. This would be construction dollars and also the Treatment Plant Ammonia System. These are both life safety issues that are critical for the plant to get, for us to get that addressed so that we don't, don't end up with a very bad situation as those are both very hazardous chemicals to, to work with. And this is, is an upgrade to the system to, to make it safer for everybody that's up there working in the plant. We got a reservoir shoreline stream erosion planning and then some construction and improvements. This is all related to, to Lake Bloomington, Evergreen Lake. With a lot of the things that we've done in the past, we showed some, you know, wrap-up pictures last year that showed the riprap that was placed along the, the banks of the, of the lake and stuff to control the shoreline erosion and stuff. We also have in, in the watershed improvements line item, matching money for grant opportunities. You know, we work closely with the McLean County Soil and Water Conservation District and look for opportunities where we can partner to make our money go further. And so this is also matching money for grant opportunities. Lake Bloomington Maintenance Facility Construction and Construction Observation. This is the Lake Maintenance Facility that burned a few years ago. This would be, you know, building a replacement building and, and getting the construction observation to, to get that building built this year. Lake Bloomington Seawall Replacement, we had an area just to the northwest of the Treatment Plant that had the, the seawall fail that fell into the lake. There's some sloughing off. This, this would be to re, to repair that area. Boiler Replacement at Division Street, that building is all, is coming up on twenty years old. The boiler is out of date. Parts are hard to get. It's time for it to be replaced. And then Fort Jesse Generator Replacement, this is our pump stations at Fort Jesse. We have, you know, two tanks, two pump stations there. The, the, the generators need to be replaced and some electrical system upgrades need to be done to ensure that our pump stations have power backups and are, they're reliably there to, to pump water into the city. So, next slide please. The Sewer Fund, once again, I said that, you know, we would have multiple pieces here to like Locust Colton. That's the case here. But you also see in the first line, multi-year sanitary sewer assessment. That's our traditionally mostly our CCTV along with some other techniques to make sure we're checking on our sewers and evaluating them. And then the Locust Colton Projects, the multi-year sanitary sewer rehabilitation. That's principally lining of sewers, but could include other rehabilitation methods. We've been very aggressive trying to, to, you know, assess the sewers and then fix them as we find issues that need to be addressed. The Grove on Kickapoo Creek Subdivision Oversizing, Sewer Oversizing. This is a, once again, with the Grove, the, the sixth addition, this is a substantial amount. And just, just note that while the, you know, the agreements, the annexation agreements and so forth speak to the oversizing. Is it the city's option? We, we don't necessarily have to do this. But this is a key sewer piece because this is an extension to the north that would ultimately serve areas east of Tuana Barnes Road. So a few years ago, there was another piece that goes off to the east. That was with the seventh addition to the Grove. The council expressed their wishes that they didn't want to oversize that one. And so we didn't. That one was kept just at the size needed for the subdivision. That extension to the east would have gone and served areas east of twenty-one hundred East Roads. That, that's like way out there, but this extension would go to the north. And if, if we don't do it, we're basically saying that we're not interested in any more growth out in that area of Empire Street or, you know, east of Tuana Barnes Road. There's a little bit that can be served there just south of St. Pat's Amarna and Harvest Point Subdivision. Those areas go to what we call the Sugar Creek Watershed. But most of this area of the Grove is in the Kickapoo Creek Watershed. And that's what the, you know, the pump station, force main and everything that's been invested in out there. That's meant to serve that area and that, that pretty much covers that area mainly east of Tuana Barnes, but it goes all the way up past ye roads in the north. So it's a large area on the east side that if, if we don't do that, we're not positioning ourselves for the future. So there might be some more questions on that later, but I just wanted to, to bring that to light. And then Hydraulic Modeling Phase One. This, you know, we, we, with our initial project with the East Street Basin are doing hydraulic modeling with this. But this is additional hydraulic modeling beyond that initial stuff that, that would include areas further out that were also impacted with the flooding and so forth. And then the Stormwater Fund, basically a repeat of the Locust Colton Projects and then the Hydraulic Modeling. Because a, as you know, with, with most of these sewer projects that involve the combined sewers, we, we're taking the funding half from sewer and half from storm because the combined sewers carry both. So that's in essence how that, that plays out. And next slide please. With that, I will turn it over to questions. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Really appreciate the information. I know this is always kind of a, a, a big chunk for residents to understand what we're doing and why we're doing it. And the, I think we keep getting better every year with these presentations in terms of presenting information to the residents so they can really have a better idea of what we're doing. You know, we started off with a, a budget book, the, you know, won a bunch of awards, then we did the Bloomington or the Budget One-on-One Series. And then these as well. I think all three of those kind of work together very well to make educated and informed citizens. So thank you. Let's open this up to questions and I see Molly's hand first. Councilmember Ward, what's going on?
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions. Thanks for the presentation, everyone. This is really helpful. And every time I'm, I'm hearing this information, I, I have more, more knowledge and more questions. Just one clarification, on the slide that made reference to work on the Cottage Avenue Bridge. We only have one Cottage Avenue, right? That's, so it said it was in Ward Five. I think that might be a mistake. Is it Ward Seven? I mean Cottage Avenue right over.
Yep, no, it's, it's right there by Row Construction. Yeah.
On the west side.
On the west side, yeah.
Great. Yeah, that might just need to be clarified. And then in, in a couple of instances, there were references to, to receiving grants or funding from other, from other sources. And I, could you just help me understand what happens to the money then that isn't used? Because it's, it's coming from another source besides the city. So I'm thinking in particular of the, the improvements to the intersection at Wiley and Maple Hill. And you mentioned, Mr. Cothee, that there would be like around two hundred thousand dollars coming from another source. So then what does happen to that two hundred thousand dollars that's not, you know, that, that isn't part of the, what we're, what we're having to spend?
Yeah. And, and I might defer to Scott on that. You want to take it, Scott?
Yeah, so this is basically the financials or the, the reserves and everything are a fund-by-fund basis. So any dollars that come back into, let's say there's a grant specifically for the water fund and we're budgeting a half million dollars, but we get a hundred thousand dollars back. Well, that's going to just, it's going to come back into the water fund for, as a hundred thousand dollars in grant proceeds, revenues to be utilized for future projects. So it'll just be part of the, the financial reserves of the fund to be utilized for future purposes.
So could we still use it in this, for this budget? Could we propose, for example, if it, this Wiley and, and Maple Hill Road intersection, if it were to be determined that there were further repairs needed on, on Maple Hill Road, could we expand the project basically?
Well, I, I think that, you know, part of it is that we have to front the money, right? And then we get reimbursed as we go. So, some of the projects, like with the STU funding, the state actually controls that. We bid it, the, and then we actually, with the progress payments, we'll, we'll reimburse the state for the expenditure. But in this case, the city, you know, has to have the money upfront and then we submit for reimbursement later. So we would actually have to increase our budget to really account for that because we may not get that reimbursement for a few months. If that makes sense. Because we have to pay the contractor as we go, you know. It, the money doesn't go away. It's still, still available for future bud.
So it can be dedicated for future projects?
Yeah, yeah. It won't go away. It's just that we can't, we can't spend it when we haven't received it yet type of thing.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next hand I saw was Councilmember Bowlin.
Uh, thank you. This presentation was very educational. I have a few questions. What is the timeline to finish up the parking evaluation? Does anyone know? If not, then that's fine.
I can give you an approximation of that, Councilmember Bowlin. The, we do have a draft report of that. It's not one hundred percent complete. So they're estimating it's going to take them about another month to two months to get the remainder of that. So we should receive that full final report that includes estimates for a new garage. Includes all the detail. We're waiting to make determinations within a couple of months.
Okay, so basically the garage will be replaced and Connect Transit is not going to come in there and try to do their thing?
I think that's probably part of a bigger discussion that would be ongoing with administration as far as what we do. At this point, we're just going to receive that report that shows the evaluation of the parking needs and then what they believe would be a replacement facility, which includes some estimates of where it would go and, and the cost of construction. But, you know, what could happen with some other things is still kind of up in the air.
Okay. And then I'd like to make a comment about the pump at the den. That's basically recycling the water that's out there in the water features. Is that correct?
Yes, the water that we hold within the lakes is then pumped out to water the golf.
Okay, because one of my residents, actually several, were concerned about the condition of the, of the golf course, those that golf. So I'm glad to see that that's being addressed. I can pass that information on. And I asked about the start of the construction for Fox Creek and Hamilton. And I think you mentioned it. Could you give that date of groundbreaking?
Yeah, so for Hamilton Road, we are looking at bidding the project in the fall of this year, this calendar year. And we're hoping to get Fox Creek out to bid in the spring of basically a year from now.
Okay, so construction would start about a year from now?
Yeah, the, the construction realistically, you know, would, would start, you know, in, in the spring of, you know, calendar year twenty-three is our goal right now. Now, you know, that's couched with, there's a lot of pieces that have to come together and we're working rapidly to try to pull that together. But, you know, just one holdout on right-of-way can, can slow us up, so.
Well, I know you've been working very hard to get this done, all those pieces up in the air, but my residents want to know.
And we want, believe me, we want to deliver these projects as well.
Yeah, I know, I know. And then I guess I'd like to know how many miles are actually going to be resurfaced or treated with the current budget. I know you're probably going to put out a map of what's going to be covered in the future. Would, would that be in that map?
Right, we can have that, the, the total miles with the map. And I don't have that before me tonight. We, you know, we, last year, you know, we, we, you know, kind of working on two years at a time, right? So we've got our, you know, current resurfacing program where we still have streets to finish up from last year that are already under contract. And then the, the new FY, you know, twenty-three streets coming for, you know, this summer for bidding. We already, you know, kind of established that. And obviously, we're going to be bringing to you, you know, an FY twenty-four proposal here pretty soon as well. So, but we can have those total miles of proposed streets for you.
Okay, that'd be helpful. The last question, you mentioned the water treatment plan and that toxic stuff. Is that the water treatment plant off of Oakland?
No, this is our, our water treatment plant for Lake Bloomington for our, our potable water.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, next hand I see is from Councilmember Becker. Go ahead, Nick.
Thank you. This is for, uh, Mr. Cothee. Kevin, you, or we talked in the three-on-one with, with Scott actually about this. So you may or may not have the answer. And if you don't, that's fine. But as it relates to the roads, we were talking about what is the capacity to do additional work from the vendors you use as well as our own staff? To say, you know, with what we've proposed, are we at capacity for what we can do or is there room for more? If there's more dollars available. Do you have any information on that?
City Engineer Craig Schonkweiler reached out to, you know, our main contractor who does typically the street resurfacing year to year. And there is additional capacity available there that, you know, we, we could increase the dollars for resurfacing. And, and, you know, each year, they, they couched it with, there is some variability because this contractor also does a lot of work for, you know, the state, for IDOT and other municipalities as well. Some years, there's not as much IDOT work going on as others. So their, their capacity could be greatly enhanced in certain years and maybe not quite as much in, in other years. But at the same time, they do have additional capacity where, you know, several million dollars more of work would not be a problem for them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, actually that brings a question that I had up, and this is probably for Kevin and maybe for Tim. The budget actually has six million dollars of asphalt and one million dollars of sidewalk. And I thought our goal was seven million of asphalt and one million of sidewalk. And I didn't know if that was related to, I know that because of COVID, people have not been driving as much. And we, part of our budget for asphalt relies on motor fuel tax. Is that why we're changing that number up? Or I was just curious what happened there?
You know, you know, the Concrete and Asphalt Fund is, is largely funded from the local motor fuel tax along with, I think, a quarter percent of sales tax as well. And, and, you know, that, that revenue that we fund this out of is, is, you know, we're pretty much spending everything that's there. And Scott, you can jump in on that. You probably have the numbers off the top of your head.
Right, but I mean, the, the goal really has been that seven million dollar figure. So the split has been roughly, from my recollection, the same as it is this current year. It's, it, there's been no deviation from that. We, we went up to, I think, eight million dollars.
One year.
One year to do Lutz Road in addition to the seven million dollars split the way we're, we're, we're doing it right now.
Okay, I, I just, my recollection was we were doing the eight million dollars and then we dropped it off because COVID started. So, and we were trying to say, we don't know what's going to happen. Let's budget conservatively for that couple of years there. So maybe, maybe I'm misremembering.
I was going to say for the, for the COVID year, we, we still, excuse me, we still budgeted the same amount even though we had concerns related to local motor fuel tax with the commitment that we would have to make up the difference. Or we would make up the difference from general, the general fund if we had to.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Oh, uh, Councilmember Motney?
Yes, just a follow-up to that. Scott, I'm interested to know how much is the quarter of a percent that is available for roads?
Doing this for my. Uh, doing this from memory, it's between two point three and two point four million. It was initially uh with the local motor fuel tax, uh fo- four cents, it was kind of a two point four million dollar split for each one. So it was two point four for the first four cents, two point four for the second four cents, and then two point four for the the home rule. So it it's it's it kind of deviates depending on what we're projecting each year. I don't have the specific number, but that's where we get to that roughly seven million dollars between those. I I still break them up into three categories, but um the the local motor fuel tax is eight cents now. Cool. Approximately two point three to two point four million.
Did you have any additional questions, Councilmember Motney?
No, no further questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Imig?
Um, thank you very much, and thanks again for the presentation. I'll go back to you, Kevin, just because that's that's a part of the conversation. I was going to ask about capacity as well. So thank you, Nick, for asking. Um, I have uh two questions. One is, how did we get to the seven million? And I know that you've explained this before, but just for the record, what, why is it seven million of combined asphalt and sidewalk work? And um is, would it be feasible at this stage in our budget process if we were to allocate additional funds for this coming fiscal year? Would that be feasible? Or is that something that would need to be reviewed for the following year?
Uh, excellent questions. Um, you know, the uh two-year program that we look at, you know, as far as picking the streets for resurfacing and so forth, are, you know, based on this level of funding available. So if we said we had more money available, we'd have to go back. You know, uh, we use software to help us with the street selection. We'd have to go back and pull in more, which that's fine. We could do that, you know. Um, and and that would uh certainly help move our streets forward. Um, a- a- and, you know, every year, as as everyone knows, the the uh price of materials and and labor and everything keeps going up. So, you know, wh- while our um, you know, budget has either remained, you know, basically the same with the seven million or seven point two million or however you slice it, our our buying power each year is actually decreasing. So, you know, that 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 hurts us in that regard. Um, but we had done some, you know, before we have our our, we we're using a a new piece of software we got about three years ago now to help us with the street selection. But prior to that, we'd done some, you know, a- analysis on our own in-house and figured we needed to get to at least, you know, that seven million dollar level uh to e- even be able to keep up with uh, you know, the streets that we have and try to maintain um, you know, the the kind of rating that we were at. So, you know, obviously now, because, you know, we're several years past and prices keep going up and so forth, we're we're really, you know, uh struggling to maintain. And and obviously, you know, there's a lot of different parts to this because we want to be able to use payment preservation to help keep our streets in better shape for longer and that type of thing as opposed to just having to resurface streets and and not getting that longevity out of them. So we're always looking towards um, you know, new new uh techniques, innovations, and whatever that we can prove out and say, hey, this made a difference. You know, this this kept the street in better condition for longer. Always looking for those opportunities and and uh, you know, our city engineer is a great addition to our team. He has um, you know, some some things that he wants to try that he's uh picked up at other other communities in in his career as well. So always looking for ways to be more efficient with taxpayer dollars and get our streets in better condition.
Okay, so uh, thank you. And I I so I'm hearing that it's possible to to react, to to consider uh putting more funding, but it's imperfect to know exactly how how it will work out because there are a lot of moving parts, including the cost of of materials and construction. Okay, that's that's helpful. Thank you. And my uh another question, um, the Hamilton Road project, i- if you could just provide a a very brief rationale for why um from your point of view, this is a really important project that we invest in and we get going on.
Yeah, you know, the the city over the last, you know, probably over twenty-five years now, uh, has in 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 this arterial road on the south side of Bloomington, it was actually identified back in the sixties in in a you know, a planning document, transportation planning document. Uh, it was identified as a a major um piece to to provide an east-west arterial on the south side of Bloomington. So that that project has been in the works for many decades in different pieces. Uh, uh, for those of you that have been around for Bloomington for a long time, know that there were different pieces that were built in in different segments in different years. Uh, all the way from, you know, east of the tracks that we're going to connect to, to the west of the tracks there by um, you know, like State Farm Park, for instance. Um, you know, the Sail Barn Road was there for years, but you know, well, it didn't become Hamilton Road until, you know, we took that old two-lane country road and turned it into to Hamilton Road. And obviously, you know, connects in, it ties into to Fox Creek. So this becomes a major corridor in the south side of Bloomington to get uh, you know, people back and forth between, you know, State Farm and Fox Creek and all the different places in between. Because, you know, as as that corridor develops, we've got more in the terms of retail and other uh, you know, amenities there. And of course, there's areas along South Main Street that are lower income areas that are going to be helped by having better better transportation corridor through here. Um, you know, but there's a lot of traffic right now. Uh, those that uh use roads lane and know know what I'm talking about, that rural road carries a lot of cars in the intersection there at uh Route one fifty Morrissey uh has is on the the state's five percent accident list, five percent worst locations in the state. And, you know, that's just a really bad intersection location uh just south of the tracks, you know, uh right next to a curve. So this project uh is a safety project and just a big, uh, you know, it's it's completing a corridor that's been in the works for decades. And um, this is one of the last pieces along with improving Fox Creek Road that we're talking about. Um, and just would be a huge amenity for the south side of Bloomington.
Thanks, that's helpful. Um, Russ?
I have question.
The um, it's probably impossible to know, but you had mentioned potential energy savings with a a new and improved um HVAC unit. Yeah. How a ballpark, like what might those savings be if they were realized?
That that's a really tough one to answer. Um,
I figure.
We're relying on the consultant to provide some essentially our, you know, ROIs on that. You know, there's a lot of figures to figure into that as far as, you know, current costs, which are increasing rapidly. I think everybody probably is experiencing that with natural gas and electricity. So there's a lot of variables in that. But quite honestly, I couldn't even take a guess at what it would be. But that is something we've tasked the consultant to provide is just um some estimated rate of return um as far as spending this additional money. Uh, and and, you know, providing additional infrastructure with the dehumanification as opposed to just replacing what we got.
Right.
Um, so I I think unfortunately, we can't say that now, but we can definitely bring that to you when we provide that uh report they're waiting on from the consultant.
Thanks. Um, and my final question is, uh, if there is a plan, you know, as you look to Lincoln, the Lincoln Garage and and provide some of those structural upgrades, is there a plan to incorporate additional E V parking? Charging stations?
That's something we're considering. Um, the 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 challenge we have there is uh the uh potential infrastructure you'd need to do for the uh the the capacity of electric. Um, so, you know, replacing the uh the service to the facility would have to be done if we're going to increase it dramatically. And we can add a few. Um, the the challenge we have is is uh the more we start adding, the more people want. So um, our our goal, quite honestly, was to focus on if we do move forward with a new parking garage, we would build that accordingly and essentially provide as many uh E V charging stations as we could possibly uh recommend putting in that facility, uh probably like an entire floor or even two floors of E V charging. Um, that's going to be more cost effective uh in the long run than trying to retrofit an existing facility.
That makes sense.
If we don't move forward with a new garage, um, then yeah, we could focus it possibly looking at that and doing some improvements to to at least add some. But uh, it's just, you know, knowing where to spend the money. And unfortunately, you know, with the facility, it it's not in terrible condition, but if we don't spend the money on the structural improvements and keep moving forward with those uh ongoing repairs, uh then we wind up unfortunately in the situation we have with market. Um, that uh the not spending money leads you to that the severe deterioration very quickly. So the money is better well spent uh on the actual structural and drainage improvements and ceiling uh as opposed to to going with the electrical. So.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you. I'm done.
Councilmember Crable?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Protam. Going back to the Hamilton Road project, I just thought of this, and I think the answer is definitely no, but there's no housing that's going to be displaced by this, right?
Say that last part again.
There's no housing uh that's going to be displaced because of this project.
Right, yeah.
And then how many miles uh are we adding of road?
That's a good question. I I I want to say uh as far as uh, well, see, that that's the thing too, is that we're going to abandon part of Rhodes Lane. So we are adding more lane miles because we're going to have a multi-lane road instead of a two-lane road. I I don't know the the lane miles off the top of my head. Uh, as far as centerline miles, i- i- we're not adding that much because we're, you know, moving basically getting rid of part of Rhodes Lane and then adding in the piece. So we're we're really not changing it that much as far as centerline miles.
Okay, and just kind of that that question was more of like how much in additional like road work will we have to eventually do because of that, right?
Yeah, okay, yeah. And that would be more related to lane miles. And I don't, I don't know the the change in lane miles, but i- it's it's probably a mile or something like that at most.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, on the roads and how much we can do, um, you know, I I see on one on, you know, one hand, uh, there are a number of projects, right, that don't get done every year and that have to be moved to the following year, like if it was done with Hershey. Right? And and then there's talk that we could potentially do more, you know, with 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 the contractor. Um, so I I think it it, to me, it makes sense maybe to like have you know, two or three roads that are projected to get done in the following year. What, you know, kind of the the best ones to do in the in the current year, right? If we were going to add a million dollars, here's what we would recommend would be the, these roads would be done, would it, you know, and maybe that's related to it being close to other roads that are being done for efficiency sake, that type of thing.
Okay.
And then uh wh- I saw some loan costs for Locust Colton. I think I've asked this before, but what roughly, how much are we spending, I guess, uh because we're not getting low, low interest loans?
I'll defer to Scott.
Uh, the conversation we had about that related to using the American Rescue Plan Act dollars was a comparison of the state revolving fund versus bonding it. And there was roughly a one million dollar difference on that on that twenty years. So the the intent really is to uh utilize a million dollars in cash on the front end and borrow less. So it's kind of, you know, a matter of perspective on how you put the words together, you know, interest savings were, but that was the kind of the the comparison we did. What what would it, what would the total cost of the project been using state revolving? What's what would be the cost using the estimated bond rate currently? Uh, well, as it was a month ago, what's the delta? And then utilize that difference against the project in the form of cash to to realize those savings to make up for the difference.
Gotcha, okay. Um, on the uh H V A C units for the arena, um, have they been in then there since the beginning, since it was built?
Yes, those units are original.
Okay. Uh, do you have a rough idea how much that you mentioned a consultant was hired, how much that consultant was? How much they charged?
So the the preliminary evaluation, which they are nearing completion of, was, I don't remember the exact figure, roughly thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, after they get the valuation done, we would need to then uh uh execute a new contract with them to finish the full design. So that's not total engineering at this point. That's just the preliminary evaluation.
Okay, um, and then um if we didn't repair it, like how long, how, what's the useful life if we just kept going? Like you, you don't recommend it, but.
So that's a tough one to answer because there's so many variables and the biggest one would be the R twenty-two. Um, we can still buy R twenty-two. Um, it's becoming less and less available as time goes on. Um, but it it comes with a very, very hefty price. So a couple of years ago, um, so each of those units has, I don't remember the exact figure, it's either eight to nine compressor units in each one. Um, and so when you go to rebuild a compressor unit, um, you pretty much have to tear the entire thing down, um, basically rebuild it from scratch. A lot of the parts that are are somewhat available, not necessarily fully available. Um, but essentially, you can't change one of those compressors to the new uh refrigerants. You have to continue using the same refrigerant um that they that they were built with and constructed for. Um, the other option would be to replace the actual compressor units with new units that have a different refrigerant. The problem we have with that is the amount of money you're going to spend to do that and then leave the deteriorated shell that's up there um is is really not cost effective. So you're took, you're either looking at a full replacement or to continue to maintain them as long as we can. And and quite honestly, as long as we can continue to get R twenty-two um and the parts are available, uh, we can continue to scrape along for probably several years. Uh, at some point, though, you know, the 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 cost to continue to do that is going to be more extreme than just replacing the unit. So uh, right, you know, how long that is, I couldn't tell you. I think a lot of that would be uh um, bennet out in the uh report we're going to get from the consultant, uh, in their recommendation.
Any idea of the new units? And maybe you're waiting for the the report, but uh how long the new units would last, look like this one, these units lasted for about fifteen years?
Yeah, so that was one of our concerns when we worked the consultant. We actually went back to the original vendor that provided those units and complained about it. Um, and said, just for the the age, the uh the deterioration of these units based on their age is just unacceptable to us. They acknowledge that, but they're not going to, there's no warranty or anything we could even pursue with that.
Yeah.
Um, so we did ask the the consultant as part of your evaluation and your cost estimating to make sure that um when you are uh doing some preliminary estimating uh and sizing these units and and specing the the quality of the units that we want to upgrade to a higher quality of uh shell, a higher quality uh features that will make them last longer. Uh, quite honestly, uh, most of those units of, you know, rooftop units are custom designed. You can't go buy them off the shelf. Essentially, they are designed and manufactured specific to the location, specific to the operation. Because you should easily get twenty to twenty-five, even thirty years out of them. Um, so our estimation is, you know, uh, worst case scenario, there, they they didn't laugh last uh half the time they should have.
Great, thanks, thanks for that answer. And one last question for Scott, uh, when will the uh budget books be published? I want to set aside some time.
Both, uh, see, don't hold me to this. Budget books will be published. Usually the the proposed, we try to have those issued prior to the proposed meeting, which is on uh March fourteenth. So that's, that would be the targeted time for the proposed budget books. And then the final, obviously, would be around the time of final adoption around April eleventh.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor, if I may, I I wanted to correct something I said previously or clarify. Uh, Councilmember Montney asked me about the the home rule component of on the streets. We're actually, because of the increase for the year, it's it's about two point eight million, so ten percent of the total home rule. And then local motor fuel tax is about four point one. So that's six nine. So without, I don't have the the full fund details in front of me. We must be using about a hundred thousand dollars worth of asphalt and concrete reserves. But home rule has gone up significantly over the over the past year due to the uh online, I which I've spoken about numerous times. Um, local component of online retail sales, um cannabis sales, et cetera. Um, and then home, local motor fuel taxes budgeted four point one, and it was four point seven pre-COVID. So if that, if we can get that back up to pre-COVID levels, that would add, you know, six hundred thousand dollars. So we'd be more in that upper seven million dollar range. Thank you.
Mayor Protam, if we could, could I please ask for an extension of time?
Yeah, I was thinking we've budgeted thirty minutes for this, and I think we're about forty-five in right now. So uh, I see all Councilmember Crumpler hasn't spoken at all yet, and then we got a couple of people with some more questions. So does anybody want to make a motion for fifteen more minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I got uh
One second.
Donna and Jeff, how's that sound? Uh, do you want to do a, we do a roll call on that one?
Yep, I'll be quick. Mayor Protam, Matthew?
Yes.
Councilmember Bolin?
Yes.
Councilmember Motney?
Yes.
Councilmember Imig?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Urban?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that reminder. Uh, I was going to say, I've often told people that it takes a special person to run for city council and uh Councilmember Crable, looking excited at the budget book coming out, highlights that. Uh, Councilmember Crumpler, you're, you got the stage.
Uh, thank you, um, Mayor Protam. Um, I really appreciate the um presentations tonight. I I also always learn a lot. And I also appreciate the um the questions of my uh council colleagues, um, help me think about the budget too. I have sort of a broad question who would, I don't know who would feel comfortable um um responding to this, but uh uh Kevin talked about the rising costs of materials and Kevin talked about the rising costs of materials and labor. Um, you know, and as I look over these capital projects, they're all multi-year complex projects. And I guess my question is, um, you know, given those rising costs and, you know, what we hear about supply chain issues, um, it seems that that might move some of the projects into, into taking, not being able to meet the timelines that you set for them. And I wonder, um, how much you're concerned about that, um, and the increasing cost that might go with it? If you could be willing to come on that, comment on that, please?
Yeah, um, that's an excellent point and, you know, um, the, the contractors, when they bid our work, have to take that into account, the duration of the project. And, uh, you know, that, that, you know, factors in not only to, you know, what the current price of those commodities or, or supplies are, but what it could be a year from now if that project continues for more than a year and that type of thing. So it definitely has an impact. And because the contractor has to, has to hedge their bets about what that's going to be when they actually need the materials, uh, delivered to the job site to construct the improvement. So that, that, uh, is, is more of a risk factor for the contractors right now. We've seen it, it, you know, just in terms of, uh, city staff and procurement, uh, with things like, for instance, um, uh, chlorine for the, uh, you know, our water treatment plant at Lake Bloomington, uh, just skyrocketed. And, and, uh, the, the, uh, you know, supplier said, you know, they locked into this price for, you know, a year. And then, you know, six months into it said, well, we can't deliver it at that anymore because our supplier that we get it from, you know, it's doubled and stuff. So these are very real things that we've had to deal with at the city. But yeah, there's, there's, uh, increased, you know, factors that we have to try to incorporate in our budgets, uh, to, to be able to, to build these multi-year projects and know that we have enough budgeted to do it. So it's, it's a challenge.
Yeah, thank you. That's all I had.
I, if you don't mind, I, I was going to share a little bit more, uh, to, uh, the question that, uh, Alderman Crumpler, um, uh, just had asked. And I might be taking this down a little bit different path, but, uh, as we review, uh, some of the larger purchases, some of the projects that we have before us, uh, and, and just trying to forecast or have that crystal ball that, um, you know, none of us have. Uh, we know that supply chain impacts, uh, material costs are driving prices much higher. You know, all eyes are actually on a, a bid opening for, uh, O'Neill Pool Project, uh, this Thursday. Uh, and, and what our fear is, is if we don't execute those, uh, you know, in a timely fashion, you know, like these multi-year projects that we're talking about now, we're never going to see the prices, uh, come back to what they were pre-COVID. Uh, and then if we pause to, uh, you know, take that moment to wait and see, we compound other projects and other, uh, large expenditures, uh, you know, that, uh, will build up, you know, two, three, four years down the road. So it, it is very challenging and, and appreciate the question.
Thank you, City Manager. Uh, before we go to, uh, repeats, uh, just a couple of thoughts I wanted to add in for myself. Uh, the first one is that all of these are budget line item placeholders and, and we still are going to have, in most cases, the opportunity to vet individual projects and individual items. They're all going to come back in front of council at some point over the course of the year. Once we have firmed up numbers, once we have design works done, once we've gotten our reports, so everything's coming back. So just keep that in mind as we're, we're answering questions tonight. You know, and I appreciated, uh, Kevin, you brought up, uh, the oversizing project that could, it kick approved, right? I mean, it's something I've, I've expressed to Tim before that I think that we need to have a council discussion in terms of how we want the city of Bloomington to grow overall. You know, I'm not convinced personally that I want more subdivisions on the east side of Tuwanda Barn Road at this point. Um, I think that there, there's other people who might have differing opinions. And, uh, but I think that there's a bigger conversation that we need to have before that oversized contract gets actually awarded, right? So, um, you know, and then my final one is I'll just say, Russ, every year we do this right near my birthday. And every year I'm going to remind you that that Market Street Garage is the same age that I am and my hair is not getting any redder. So, um, okay, with that said, I'll, I saw, uh, Donna's hand up. So Councilmember Bowlin, you've got the stage again. Be quick, please.
Yeah, I'm, I'll be really quick. Um, I'm going to throw this out there for the record. Kevin made a point about, um, of course, the cost going up and sort of difficulty keeping up with the, um, need for the work on the road resurfacing. I would suggest that if we're going to look at a two-year program, that the funding matched the program rather than the other way around, if that, if that makes sense. And, um, the other thing regarding Hamilton Road, like Kevin said, this has been in the works forever and ever. Just today I got a, uh, notification from the planning commission that there is a, uh, developer wanting to develop the Sail Barn property, which is right there on the corner. So there is development necessary in that area. It's already annexed, it's already zoned and War II needs more than just residential and golf courses. We need some commercial and retail in order to generate tax revenue. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, last but not least, Councilmember Rodney?
Sorry, I just want to reinforce Donna's comment there and ask a question of Kevin. Um, back in August, uh, you shared a statistic that 42% of our streets are rated fair or below in the software that helps prioritize street repairs. And I was just wondering if staff has a point of view of what that target should be? And what would it take for us to make the investments needed to match up to what we believe this community should have in terms of its overall street ratings?
Yeah, um, that, that, uh, target goal as far as, um, what that rating should be for all our streets that, that, um, you know, I, I don't know that anybody's really, really set that as far as, um, you know, in the past, we more or less have tried to maintain or improve a little bit, but what is that target we want to hit? Um, I think that's probably something that you as the elected need to have some, uh, you know, input on that. And, uh, what would that cost? Um, you know, the, the software we have, uh, can run a lot of scenarios and we could look at some of that. You know, to see what that might be, but, uh, very good point.
If, if you don't mind, uh, Alderwoman Motney, uh, and, and it was actually Alderman, uh, Becker that sort of kicked off, uh, the conversations about roads tonight. I know that we have had a fair amount of comments in previous council meetings, uh, one-offs from almost all the council members. Uh, we will prep that as staff. Uh, we will get that answer to you, uh, about, uh, what the capacity is, uh, uh, before, uh, next week. Uh, if we've got our city engineer that's having that conversation with, uh, the prime, uh, that we typically use, uh, we'll report back next week under the, uh, budget presentation. Also, uh, shifting gears a little bit, uh, just for a moment outside FY23, uh, of the ARP funds, uh, you know, I've described it as buckets. Uh, fully expect that council is going to approve an infrastructure bucket, uh, for, uh, a sizable amount of those dollars that we have. Uh, and of that infrastructure, fully expect that, uh, fair amount is going to be asphalt and concrete, uh, to see what we can actually do with more. But to the question about an ongoing revenue stream, uh, with, uh, the likely losses on the locomotive fuel tax, how do we supplement those? Uh, we will work on that and have a larger discussion with staff. So I appreciate all the comments from everyone regarding that.
Thank you, City Manager. Uh, with that, we're going to move on to agenda item 5B. We've got three different, uh, council member initiatives, uh, and we're going to do them in the order that they were submitted. So the first one is from Councilmember Becker. To, um, ways to reduce, well, Nick, why don't you go ahead and you prefaced it. You've got, uh, three minutes and then we've got three minutes of comments from council members afterwards.
Before I start, Jamie, can I ask a procedural question?
Absolutely.
Um, so reading all the stuff that came through about the procedure, I'm going to take my three minutes, then do I make a motion that I recommend us going for option one, one or two? Or does somebody else have to make that motion? What's the, what's the protocol?
Uh, I'm going to let the city clerk handle that one real quick.
Councilmember Becker, you're welcome to make that motion or somebody else can also. It'll be a motion in a second.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, first, real quick, I want to acknowledge the, the public comment, um, from Serena and lead that into acknowledging the good work that Tim and Deb Skillrude had done kind of on one of the topics that I mentioned about consolidation of some things. Yes, the staff has done a great job consolidating some departmental things. Um, there's been great cooperation between the, uh, the city and the township. And that's the spirit of which I bring this up is not, um, not a, a negative, but just looking at it as a way to really find ways to become more efficient. If you look at the big picture, slight digression. Illinois has so much bloat in its government. I think we've got 6,000 government agencies. That's more than Indiana, Iowa, and Kentucky together by at least a thousand. There's a lot of bloat in government through all the rules and regulations and statutes that have been put in place over the years. And so not picking on anybody locally here for that, it's just, there is an opportunity for efficiency. And what I wanted to do with this initiative was not create a commission, but just to get a few items on the docket for us to focus and identify to move forward. I picked the ones that I did because research told me that there was opportunity in these three. But I'm not trying to have me direct the staff on the how. I'm trying to suggest a what. I'd like us to look for efficiencies where we can find ways to reduce redundant efforts across entities, whether it be the city and the township, the city in the county, the BEC in the county, right? I want us to reduce those issues. So I rec, mentioned the township because I do think, uh, like I said, Tim and Deb have worked very hard to try and look at some of the administrative functions and how we can consolidate some of those to save. I mentioned the BEC in McLean County as an example too, because we've seen articles on both spending more money to become more efficient on voting in the next, uh, elections. That's redundancy. It's extra money being spent. I know some will not think that we can achieve that one, but it's just an example. Um, the 911 system, right? There's, there's redundancy there because we're doing it differently across different entities. So my proposal is that the city come back to us and say, hey, let's forget what's been done in the past. No excuses that we tried it and it failed. Let's come back with two or three initiatives that can really move the needle and help us save some money. And maybe we can put that money into the roads. So that's kind of the general purpose. So if I'm going to make the motion, I would motion that, uh, for option two, that the city go back and research, the staff go back and research and bring something back to us based on their research. And if it's different than my suggestions, great, as long as it's something that's worthwhile. So that would be my motion.
I'd be happy to second that.
Okay. Um, so under kind of some of the new guidance, we've got three minutes where we are going to go around and, um, each one of the council members, you guys like 20, 30 seconds to say yes, give a couple of thoughts. Um, say no, give a couple of thoughts, however you want to handle that. Does that sound right?
Yeah, if we can just run through the roll call, I'll just pause and they can say how they'd like to vote and then talk a few minutes like, or a few seconds, like you said, so. Okay, uh, we will start with you, Mayor Protem.
So, uh, yeah, I, I will say yes to the motion. I shot, Nick, I shot you back a bunch of thoughts right after you submitted it on some of the different parts of it, but, uh, the overall concept of combining some possible government units, uh, to reduce waste, yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowlin?
Uh, yes, I support this and I appreciate the comment of bringing it back separately because that was my only concern. Instead of lumping them, bring, bring each item separately.
Thank you. Councilmember Motney?
Yes, I think Councilmember Becker's initiative is an important first step to a dialogue that needs to go a lot deeper in that regard. About seven or eight years ago, we were spending 161 million annually to run the city and now we're at about 269 with this million with this proposed budget. I appreciate the, uh, opportunity to weigh in and thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Emig.
Um, yes, I support option two as presented and, um, I've, I've also written back to Councilor Becker. So he knows some of my, um, initial thoughts, but I, I'm, I'm always interested in how we might collaborate to work better together.
Thank you. Councilmember Becker, did you have anything else you wanted to say?
No, I'm good. And yes, I'll vote for it.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Urban?
Thank you. Um, Nick, I'm glad that we separated this. I'll, I'll reiterate what Donna said into different little packages. Because if this was in one package, I would have had to have said no. Since we're asking for different pieces coming back, I'm going to go, yes, Leslie, I would like to see this come back in bites.
Thank you. Councilmember Board?
Yeah, I'm open to more conversation on this. I'll vote yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Crable?
Um, yeah, I'll vote yes, just, you know, kind of cautionary. Um, I don't want reduction, I mean, a reduction to equal reduced services, I guess. So I think we should look at that. Um, I like the fact that it's going to be our, our staff that's going to come back with the top, you know, ideas on how we can reduce, uh, cost. Um, and then, um, you know, it's part of the discussion should be other reasons, maybe that we're, we're not combining things. Um, and, um, you know, and I think kind of going to the comment of how much our budget has increased over time. I think, um, uh, Scott and Tim have kind of explained, uh, you know, that, that process. So I don't necessarily see those two tied. I just think we should always look for, for these types of things. And I know the city does that, but no, no issue in, uh, in, in focusing on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Crumpler?
Um, yes, I, I, I would vote yes. And Nick, I really appreciate you bringing this forward. Um, I think, uh, obviously one of the primary responsibilities we have as council members is to be good stewards of, of taxpayer dollars. And to take a, a good, hard look at how we're spending money and if there are ways that we could, um, cut spending or, or combine efforts, you know, for efficiency. I'm certainly all for that. So, thank you.
Okay, new process worked pretty well. Nice job, everybody. All right, moving on to our second initiative, uh, was submitted by Councilmember Emig. So you've got three minutes to kind of give us your thoughts and we'll go from there.
Thank you. Um, this, this initiative, uh, was born out of a conversation with a lot of other community members around, um, the flooding that happened last June. And truly the conversation from the beginning was, are there other ways to address, uh, the massive overflow we had into our combined sewer systems? And hence the flooding of basements with sewage. Um, and perhaps a broader opportunity here to think about, uh, green infrastructure as a mechanism for not only mitigating some of that overflow, um, but also creating, um, a generally a more environmentally sound, uh, community. And my initiative is to establish a green infrastructure commission that would be advisory. Um, and their role would be to survey all of the work that is currently being done. Um, some of it is definitely in the landscape of green infrastructure, no pun intended. Um, the, the discussion around doing the hydraulic modeling and the, um, the East Street Basin is, is all part and parcel of that. But this is an opportunity to say, okay, are there other oper, ways that we might be able to go forward? Um, how might we enhance these current projects? How might we bring in other stakeholders in the community? How might we educate folks to think about what even I might be able to do in my own home to mitigate some of these issues? And, um, to fulfill the city's stormwater and sanitary master plan, which is to educate and involve the public. Um, there are many, many ways that this could go, but I thought having uh, an advisory panel with, with experts and community members, um, including the experts on the city staff, um, would make this process more intentional and hopefully, um, just be deliberately integrated into the planning that we're doing. So the, my initiative is to establish this infrastructure, to study and recommend, um, policies or practices around green infrastructure in Bloomington. And I think voting, uh, for the second option here would make sense because I, I do want to hear back from staff about, um, the feasibility. the feasibility, the reality of whether or not this this is appropriate, given the other works that are in play. And really see this just as a chance to work in tandem to clarify an approach going forward. Any questions?
Thank you. So we've made you've made a motion at this point. Do we have anybody who wants to second that?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second from Councilmember Crable. And we're just going to go around the dais again, just like we did last time.
We will start with you, Mayor Proten.
So I will vote yes to this. You know, but when it comes back, I wonder if this is better served as like a temporary task force than a permanent commission. I mean, I'd just be interested to see some thoughts on that. But I think that I think that it's worthwhile of letting some community members that we know have expertise bring some feedback to us. And then letting staff think about it and decide what they want to do next.
Thank you. Councilmember Bolin.
Yes, I'd like to have some more conversation and learn more of what Julie is talking about. But I do know that in the newer subdivisions on the periphery of town, the green infrastructure is already within the Chapter 24 ordinances. So and Kevin can confirm confirm that. And in my mind, too, some of this might be related to land use, which might be appropriate for the planning commission. But I would like to include that in part of the conversation. So I vote yes.
Councilmember Motney.
So this is an area where I've been very impressed with the city staff's ideas and the specific things that they've already brought forward. It seems to me like this is a timing issue. We've already approved the work for hydraulic model hydraulic monitoring, which seems to be the appropriate step one for this. So I'd like to see some of what is already set in motion playing out before we initiate new work for city staff in this area. So for me, it would be a no for now.
Thank you. Councilmember Emig, did you have anything more to add?
I appreciate that feedback. I think time wise, it's there's an opportunity here that as we learn from the hydraulic hydraulic modeling, we could have, and I'm comfortable with a task force. We could have a task force make suggestions. And it there are there are other ways you can implement green infrastructure. I am no expert, but I have had many conversations with with those who who know a lot about this approach that that would be separate from the results of the hydraulic modeling. That's just just one area where they could be where it could be amplifying what we're doing.
Thank you. Councilmember Becker.
So real quick, I struggle with this one, Julie, is I like some of the ideas. I do believe that a lot of the the discussion is is going to be somewhat duplicated. Like Donna, I think, said the planning commission with what the staff's doing. I'm a little bit worried that adding another level, kind of back to the efficiency comment, will actually slow us down in a way. So I guess I'm open to discuss it. But if I was purely voting to start a commission or another committee, I would say no.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Urban. Hope you're on mute.
Yes, I was getting there. Apologize. Thank you. I I'm going to. I'm really conflicted about this because I really do not have any intention of wanting to start any more commissions or committees. The option of maybe a task force was mentioned. That was entertaining. So my knee jerk reaction would have been to say to have said no, because I don't want to commission. And Julie, I would say I would like to see us up the bar here and just make an expectation of staff to establish green space with every project. Just just upping that bar and and making it to where we have an expectation for green space every time there's a project or a planning commission submit, we expect that as a higher standard for our city, for our residents. Because I really want this conversation to continue, I think I'm going to have to say yes. But I really am also saying, yes, Julie, let's raise the bar and let's look at some different things than just tossing this off onto a committee because I don't want another commissioner committee. But I want to set a higher standard for everybody in our city. So let's bring the something like that back to the table, if you would please. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Crable.
I'll say yes. I think actually having additional committee is a good thing. I don't think any other committee addresses this issue. I think it can be a benefit to staff to have outside expertise. I think it helps getting more people involved in local government. It will help educate and involve the public. So, yeah, I'm 100% in favor of of a committee, whether whatever form it is.
Thank you. Councilmember Crumpler.
Thank you. Julie, I really support this idea and will vote yes. I do have some of the same concerns or questions that Dee raised. No, I guess I'd like to know what what you see is a little bit more is about what's different and unique about a proposed commission or task force that can't be accomplished in some of the existing structures that we already have in place. You know, and candidly, you and I know how long it takes to get commissions together sometimes. If we were able to pull this together, even by the end of April or even May, you know, setting agendas and guidelines and getting people on board takes a lot of time. And I just wonder if it might be a more, if there might be a more efficient way to do this. And I'd love to hear more when when this comes back for discussion. So, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody. On to the third initiative, and that was submitted by Councilmember Ward. So three minutes is yours.
Great, thank you. I spent a little bit of time during Councilmember comments last week, already sort of prefacing this. So I'm not going to go into a whole lot of detail about the the initiative itself. You can read that on the agenda item. It basically calls for a special commission to address the issue of gun violence. It should be a commission that is is made up of stakeholders from a number of different different parts of the community. And the idea is that that commission would study the scope of the problem of gun violence in our community and then issue recommendations that we could then act on as a council. I want to spend the bulk of the next couple of minutes, though, addressing some of the questions that I've already received about this. First off, one of the questions is, do we really have a problem with gun violence in in our city? And I would say that two deaths already this year and tonight's lockdown. Granted, that was in Normal. It wasn't in Bloomington, but it's still one community. Lockdown on College Avenue and Veterans Parkway should send the signal that we do have a problem with gun violence in this community. Secondly, won't it send the wrong message to people who are considering living in Bloomington or or working in Bloomington or establishing businesses in Bloomington? And I would say that it's precisely the opposite, that it would send the message that this is a community that takes seriously every single life, that two people, that one person is too much to lose. And that it's a city that is creative and proactive, that we don't wait around to be reactive, but we're proactive. Another question, why not incorporate it into other commissions or existing committees such as the PSCRB? Or why don't we establish a much broader committee or commission to deal with just crime in general? And I would say that that runs the risk of watering it down. We have a number of other commissions that are dedicated to special concerns, historic preservation, technology, so on and so on. I would think that preventing people from being shot to death, from experiencing that kind of trauma would be at least as important. And then finally, can't we call it something else? Do we have to use the word gun in it? Well, you know, I think it's time to get real and stop pretending. I think that that it the people of Bloomington are smarter than this. And they will recognize that we just need to call it what it is and get on with it and do something. So I am moving that we have the staff evaluate and prepare an analysis on the proposed initiative and bring it back to the council for further discussion. I understand that there is there this the structure that needs to be created. And there's some effort that needs to be put into that. And so for that reason, I'm moving option two.
Okay, thank you very much. So we'll just repeat for option number two, right? We does anybody want to second this first?
I'll second.
Okay, we got a second from Councilmember Emig.
All right, Mayor Proten.
So I am a yes on this. However, I just want to make sure that we are not duplicating the efforts of other groups in town. If we can elevate their conversations and increase their bandwidth to to some more people here and see what they're doing, that's a good thing. Yeah, I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. Councilmember Bolin.
Well, I have several concerns in the sense that the initiative as written is that the commission will put together a comprehensive plan to address gun violence. I have confidence the police department has a comprehensive plan to address gun violence within the confines of the law. And I just want you to know that the Justice Commission, the McLean County Justice Commission and the McLean County Mental Health Coordinating Council are have data and are working on this type of thing already. I'm really conflicted. I don't mind having further conversation. But in general, I don't like the way it's presented with having a comprehensive plan that, you know, to tell the police what to do when I'm not a police expert.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Motney.
I'm very concerned about the crime trends in our community and the role that guns play in crimes in our community. Gun policies, for the most part, you know, are state driven. And if there's an appetite to move forward on this, I feel like we have an existing group that we could task with the very specific elements of this request for analysis and bring in ad hoc experts from the community to help provide new voices in that process. I think the opportunity to do that, leveraging the administrative framework we already have, would be our best option.
So just for clarification, do you support the evaluation and preparation by staff for further analysis?
I do not support the new commission proposal. I do. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't mean to catch up with that. Councilmember Emig. Did, yeah, did you? Yeah, if you're supportive of the motion.
Nick, you've switched places with me, just so you know, in my head. Yes, I thank Councilmember Ward for bringing this forward. What I what I like about it is that it reminds me of the work that the Housing Coalition did at the in the wake of COVID. I think that there there are definitely, there's definitely a need to have police officers be part of the conversation. But I do I do see that in our community, we have a lot of these efforts and initiatives existing in silos. And this is an opportunity to bring the different departments who are working on this, different entities, social work, mental health, poverty, there's so many, so many multiple multiple factors that go into this. And having having a group coalesce to discuss and and perhaps maybe not come up with a comprehensive plan, but rather find a way to bring these silos together to work towards a more meaningful response to gun violence in the community. So, yes, number two.
Councilmember Becker.
So, you know, I want to thank Molly for putting this forward. I can't can't think of anything more that as I look at, you know, a place to raise my kids that bothers me more than violence in the community, right? I absolutely hate it. I went and did some research on this and I talked to law enforcement folks from around the country that I'm friends with and know a lot about this. And to a person, they felt like sometimes these commissions slowed down the effort. From listening to Chief Simmington, I believe that he's the guy to bring those groups together and take those inputs. I think he's reaching out to a lot of the groups that are already involved and trying to get that input. I think he's very open to it. And I think his goal is to to make these changes. So I'm not in favor of a commission, but I am very much in favor of finding ways to continue the efforts of the police department and the DA's office and pulling the input from all the organizations and people you're talking about, Molly.
Can you clarify if you're supportive of the initiative as a?
No, on a commission.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Urban.
Thank you. And and I I appreciate Molly that you've brought this forward. But I'm trying to look right at you and say, I don't really want answers from a commission eight months from now. I want answers yesterday. And I feel like the only way we're going to get those answers is that we use the departments and the commissions we already have, the PSCRB, the relationship that they have with the stakeholders, the relationship they have with the police department, with the city officials. I I'm not singing praises, but they've done an outstanding job in the past. And we really need someone moving on this quickly. And because I agree with you, but I don't want to create a commission to do it. I want I would support if you said I want a motion to get something done now, I would support now. But I'm not going to support nine months. So for now, my answer is no. But a different motion, my answer could be yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Ward.
Yeah, I'll be voting yes. And I will just say that I've been raising this issues issue with a number of folks that have already been mentioned for literally since before I was sworn in as a council member. So I would like those answers to have happened yesterday as well. The reason I'm putting forward this initiative is because I'm still waiting.
Thank you. Councilmember Crable.
100% yes on this. I think we have to recognize that this is not just a police issue. Police deal with symptoms. And we need to look at the root causes and try to figure out solutions.
Thank you. Councilmember Crumpler.
Thank you. Molly, thanks for bringing this forward. I want to support this idea as well. I do have some similar concerns that have been expressed already, the timeline of a commission that I mentioned previously. Also, I would like to hear more about why why not PSCRB is as a committee? I mean, if we do have, again, existing structures in place. And just even already, it sounds like to me that the the composition of this commission could be really political. And so I think, you know, any any effort to move forward, whether it's a task force or a commission or whatever ends up being possible, I think we need to be really careful about who gets on this committee and why. And, you know, finally, I guess I'd like to say, just overall, it seems to me like there are at least, from my count, five council initiatives out there right now that we're all considering, all equally perhaps important, equally, you know, valuable. And I wonder if we, as a governing body, might need to think about some priorities in terms of staff time and how the work gets done to move these projects forward. So, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So did we get the answer we wanted? I think I counted six, three on that one.
That's exactly right. You had Councilmember Motney, Councilmember Becker, and Councilmember Urban voting no. Thanks.
Okay, and so this one will come back at some point with some staff analysis on it. City Manager Gleason, you okay with that? Good? Okay. Okay, thank you, everybody. Appreciate cooperation with kind of a new format of how we handle those. So I think that worked out pretty well. Next item on the agenda is city manager's discussion. So City Manager Gleason, turn this one over to you.
Thank you very much. I think I have two slides tonight. First slide is Miller Park Zoo festivities this Friday and Saturday. Animal Crackers educational classes and next slide. Or was that it? Junior Zookeepers, another event at the zoo, March 7th, 8th, and the 10th. And other activities that can be found on the city's website. And other activities that can be found on uh, the city's website, uh, celebrating uh, female entrepreneurs. Uh, this is our first Friday event downtown. And I think that is it. Do we have a new employee slide? Okay. And then additionally, uh, just wanted to again thank uh, the uh, facilities crews, parks and rec crews, public works crews, police and uh, fire uh, for all their efforts in uh, this uh, uh, second storm event. And I think we're watching uh, Thursday for a possible third, uh, but it is February in central Illinois. Uh, also wanted to share uh, some of the upcoming uh, council uh, agenda items for uh, February twenty-eighth. And uh, some of those are uh, a presentation by uh, Heartland Community College President, Dr. Keith Cornell. Uh, Heartland Community College was awarded about a million dollar uh, grant. Uh, that is uh, an investment in our community, in the entire like Community College region, but uh, some of the demographics are larger in our community. And they definitely complement the scholarship opportunities that this council is already uh, investing in and some of the residents of our community. So it's exciting. We're gonna hear more about that next week. Also, uh, going to have an agenda item for uh, honorary streets, uh, street names, uh, designations for former Mayor Judy Markowitz, Mr. Merlin Kennedy, and Mr. Henry Gay. And then also, uh, an agenda item that uh, will be on the regular agenda that's received a little bit of uh, uh, coverage is uh, the flock safety agreement. Uh, we've had two attempts to get this in front of the PSCRB. Uh, those have failed for various reasons to take a look at. It's not uh, required. Uh, but trying to allow the PSCRB uh, to function as it was intended. So this is something that uh, will come before them in a special meeting this week, and it will be uh, an agenda item next week on uh, February twenty-eighth. And then also, uh, we have uh, Chief Simmington and possibly uh, other members of uh, his executive staff that will uh, provide the Bloomington Police Department strategic plan. Would have been tonight, but uh, Chief Simmington is actually out of town and uh, we bumped it uh, one week. So I think uh, Mayor Protim, that is all I've got, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, we do not have an executive session this week, uh, so nothing there. So how about a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Uh, Molly beat you to it. Donna, do you want to be second?
I'll be second.
Okay. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, you can stay here by yourself. All right, we'll see you later. Thank you, everybody, and have a great evening and uh, take care of yourselves.